Please, everyone, to our next to play allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, thank everybody here tonight. Looks like we've got a full agenda. A good thing. Let's start though by approving the minutes of the January 30th, 2018 regular meeting. Motion please. Some move. Second, Mr. Baker. Will you? Are them all yes?
Yes.
Okay. We do not have anyone signed in to speak this evening, Mr. Lamel?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. I think everybody else here is already on the agenda, so perhaps not. Okay. First on our agenda is Brian Chris, and Brian wants to talk to us about middle school golf. It's great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. This evening, just here to present the fact that former coach, retired coach John Schimpf, was pressuring me to get a golf team going over there, over at middle school. We have some young men that would like to try to play. I've been working with some other coaches around this other part of the state, even over in Huntington St. Joe. There's a guy there wanting to play, and my oldest son plays on the high school team. And I can tell you, golf's a great sport that you can play for a long, long time, even after the knees and shoulders are gone sometimes.
You don't even have to be any good.
That's right. You don't even have to be any good. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. It's a great sport. So, some of the middle schools around have picked it up. I don't know personally, I can't say that there's really any cost to it because the boys provide their own equipment. Somebody I know already got them golf shirts, just in case you guys approved them to have a team. Probably be four kids on the team. That's typically what you find in your matches is our team's are four. And so, that's kind of it. I have, they do, they require them to practice. We would not have a home course. I, well, actually, my oldest son, my youngest son operate a driving range out at our farm. It's officially opened last fall. And so, the golf teams, both the school golf teams are allowed to come and hit anytime they like for free charge, no charge whatsoever. So, they can get their practices in and get some swings in. So, that's something that, you know, we, that games is something that I encourage. Mr. Limble over there actually gave us our first shag bag balls open to drive ranges with it, so he saw Brock over there hitting all the time. But anyway, I respectfully request that you give us permission to start a golf team. And like I said, any cost, we'll figure out the cost to it and take care of that.
Sir, green fees when you do play?
Typically, when you go to other courses, they have, typically, the other teams have a home course. Again, as I said, we don't have one. I know the high school plays, you know, if we play Chapmanville, we play Logan Country Club, we'll go to, Polka plays at Berry Hills. There are no charges for that. The golf courses are very good about allowing the kids to come and play. The golf courses tend to be pretty open to the kids playing because obviously, it's future customers, but they want to encourage them to play the game. So, most of the courses around are very friendly with that. And, yeah, actually, Big Ben, I just realized last year, is the most played course in the state. There were 30,000 rounds. And they are so kid-friendly, it's amazing to me. My son goes over anytime he wants, and as long as they're on a golf team and they know it, the Big Ben folks, they let them play for free anytime. And so, of course, he wears it out, but they don't mind it. So, most of the courses are kid-friendly. Most of those schools, I think, like Logan, Madison, as I said, I think St. Joe, they have courses that allow them to play their matches, their home matches, and it's free. Unfortunately, we don't have courses in the county, so, so, long answer.
Aside from what you're, I'm not totally sure what you're able to do with your place, but would they, in addition to that, ever go and have any practice rounds at an area course?
Yeah, actually, Coach Stratton from Huntington St. Joe, they play down in that area, Huntington area. He just actually texted me today and said, "We are more than welcome to come down and play practice rounds with you."
Because I didn't, with Mr. Huntington, didn't they go to Asquire occasionally?
Yeah. So, we could probably go to Big Ben if we needed to, and to Huntington St. Joe's course.
Sir, this would be a competitive thing eventually, and when is the season?
It just, well, we can start scheduling matches, I'm guessing, as soon as the weather begins. I'm not sure, actually, the calendar date. I should have looked, but I'm guessing that the late March. So, it'll be a short season. Yeah, oh, absolutely. High school's in the fall, middle school's in the spring.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, and we have some, we have two or three eighth graders interested, we have seventh grade that are interested right now. I'm sure there'll be others. We'll try to accommodate anyone we can, let's say, if there's one. Only if we can get them all to matches because it depends on the numbers of kids.
Is that typical? Would you have a match, I mean, you have four or 13, that's?
Typically, yeah. And it, like, I've been going with Coach Huntington the last three years with the high school. And typically, what happens, I mean, some days you'll show up, though, and they'll schedule multiple teams. And so, you'll have, you know, four, possibly five, and they let you know ahead of time if they have other kids. And that way, you can create more kids to support.
As far as transporting students to the match, would that just be done with private transportation?
That would be allowed. I mean, it's probably going to be parents of those golfers.
Well, is there a procedure where?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I know, and I'm not a board employee of the basketball game, I may not get a pitch with, or try to get it, but.
Well, there's a procedure where.
Sure.
Right.
I know Mr. Huntington uses a county vehicle, but I don't, but I don't, I could say, I don't know where.
Does anybody else have the other question?
I mean, if we do this, do we not treat this like any other sport? As I understand it, this is a team that you want to start here in Hamlin for the Hamlin Middle School students. How do we offer a sport at one school that we don't offer at the other three schools?
I understand, probably Mr. McKeever, that should we go in that direction, that the opportunity would be available to the other middle schools also, whether they were wanting to participate in T F D.
So, at that point, though, I mean, here, you've got people that are more affluent, affluent maybe, that have the ability to purchase all the trappings to go along with a golf game. And you have that available for the kids that are interested in playing. I don't know if we'd have that at Duval, Down Valley, and Harz. So, it's more, in my mind, it's more, it's more of an issue than just saying, "Let's do this right here, right now, and make it available to the other schools," but it's going to be a cost. Golf clubs even cheap, golf clubs aren't cheap. Are they?
Well, we do their basketball shoes and track shoes and all that.
The parents typically buy those. There's difference in a hundred dollar pair of basketball shoes and a four, five, six, seven hundred dollar set of golf clubs.
I mean, you can start her set for a pretty inexpensive price, and.
If you've got two suits, I'll sell cheap.
Honestly, the high school doesn't provide any of that to the kids. So, we buy, my son, he works at a golf course and buys his own, which I'm perfectly fine with. So, he just bought him an eight hundred dollar set. But, at the same time, Luke Roberts just started playing at the high school, and David, he bought him a nice little starter set for Christmas. I mean, it's, I have clubs. If we had kids without clubs, I'm sure we'd be rounding up, you know, the golf courses have clubs as well. So, I don't, I don't think equipment necessarily would be an issue, but, and again, they can come and hit it. And they come and hit, I understand the concern, but they can come and hit it at any of the schools. I mean, we're here in town, they could come and hit at our facility and be perfectly fine and even get, offer some instruction if they want.
I'm not assuming maybe at Harz, Chapmanville Company, or Logan County.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd like to let them play there.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they're very, they're very loyal to the kids. Logan and Chapmanville.
And the Duval area, the Big Ben, the Big Ben is fairly close there. So, kind of down there, I guess, that's part of the, but I don't know. I mean, that's a point, but, just like any of the other schools, we don't mandate that they even participate in these sports. It's available to those who want to. But, what we will do, Brian, is here in the next couple of weeks, we're going to begin talking about those things if we have another sport that's going to be requested. And we haven't made a decision on that either. But, like you said, it doesn't seem to be a lot of other associated costs that would be cost to, you know, coaching these things. But, I think one of the things I guess want to do is, I think that's something that we have to look at and then.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. And I would like to get on the agenda at some other point and talk to my business, which is primary care and some of the school-based health services we provide in the school strategy county. Give you an update, give you some numbers in terms of, in terms of getting the kids back to class, making sure they're healthy, some of the projects we're doing. Looks like we're going to, you know, we've expanded into the Midway and Ranger Schools, and we're all, have been for a long time, and at Guyan Valley, and in County High at Duval. But, it's always helpful, I think, so you can kind of see the number of kids we're seeing and how we're working with the school nurses, and the numbers of, because our goal was, you know, the statewide association, its goal or mission is always to make healthy kids make better students. And so, you know, we try to, we try our very best to diagnose, make sure that they're not anything, have anything contagious, and then get them back to class so they can be productive. And so, we'd like to come back at some point next month or two.
Absolutely. I appreciate what you do. Just contacted Mr. McKeever from Missfau.
Okay.
Fantastic. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is Dr. Regula, thirteen, and we're going to talk traumatized and drug endangered children.
Children.
Unfortunately, we've got the topic that might be discussed later.
Well, good evening. About two years ago, we had a discussion about the rising number of special education in this county. And that not only was it drastically above the national average, but that it was way above the state average, and that we wanted to figure out what was going on. And we found out, pretty much, what was going on is that we have kids that have been traumatized or otherwise drug endangered. And when they came to us, we needed to help them and didn't know what to do, so we put them in a special education box. What we found, though, is that it's not the appropriate way to service these children, and that it's more than just some of our children that have been identified with IEPs. That a large number of our population, our children come from homes that they were born drug addicted or drug exposed, they have been placed into foster care or adopted out of foster care, they are being raised by grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins because they had been abandoned in one way or another from their parents, and that this is affecting them within the classroom. And we see this, especially within our lower grades with PK, K1 and 2, with a lot of behaviors we've never seen before, and our teachers become a little bit at a loss. And so, like we said about two years ago, we started with sending a delegation to the Handle With Care Conference in Charleston, West Virginia. And we are a Handle With Care county. And Handle With Care means that if the police or law enforcement respond to any type of situation, drug, domestic violence, in which children are present, they send a message to dispatch that then sends an email to us that says the child's name and the words Handle With Care. And then, we make sure that the principal knows, so that those working with that children that day knows to look at them through a slightly different lens, and try to offer them support throughout the day. From that delegation, we asked them, "What do you think that we needed?" And we got a lot of response, and that's where we've been working. And one of the things that we've been doing is try to bring a large awareness of what this means to our students here in Lincoln County. And we were able, two years ago, to bring, or last year, Susan Mulay from Anchorage, Alaska, and to help train a small group of our staff, as well as kind of an overview to a select number of staff, of what it means to be traumatized, what does an ASCORE have to do with our children in the classroom, and what are some beginning strategies we can try to implement in changing our behavior than to work with our students. From that, Mr. King came to one of our trainings and decided he wanted to be completely involved with this with us. And so, working together, he was then able to secure funding to bring Susan in for 18 days this year. And from the days that she's been here so far, she has done some of our training, she brings more of our staff aware to what's going on. And she's also had individual visits to the schools to find out specifically in each little culture of our schools, what they see is the biggest need. So, I think Mr. King's going to tell you a little bit, has some pictures for us, but then a little bit about where we want to go with this.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lowe. Before I start my presentation, I just want to provide some background info, and I know you've probably heard this before, but I think it's worth bringing up again. The information that I'm reporting tonight comes from the Center of Disease and Control in the CDC. A report was done, and the information was reported in 2016, that West Virginia unfortunately ranks number one in overdoses. Forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine overdoses in 2016 were reported. That's 52 out of every 100,000 people overdose. And that's five times the amount that was reported in 1999. Unfortunately, in 2017, those numbers increased to 63,600 overdoses. In West Virginia, there were 631 overdoses last year, an increase of 78 percent. And unfortunately, my friend, those six, of those overdoses, the 63,631 came from Cabal County. Cabal County leads all counties, and they're right next door to us. Fifty-four out of every 100,000 people OD. And I have some ugly graphics to share with you this evening. If we could, if you'd open your folder, and the first one has alcohol and heroin and the effect that those two items, for lack of a better word, have on the brain. And I'm going to ask us this question. So what now what? The elephants in the room, we can't run from them. So what now what? What are we going to do? If you look, and specifically, we're going to focus on the heroin addiction. Look what it does to the brain. Look at those holes that are so vivid in the brain. And what does it do to the adult? That's the adult brain. It blurs and damages all boundary issues. So, the folks that are addicted to this stuff can't provide the basic care, provide safety or protection for themselves, let alone the children, let alone their children. That leaves our babies to defend, defend for themselves. If you'll refer to the next page, or the next graphic, it's purple that says brain development. Look at what happens. This is a three-year-old child that is exposed to neglect. Look what happens to the brain. It's very easy to see that that brain doesn't develop. It's small. It's scary that we, this is what we're, that this is what we're dealing with. This is the reality of it. And let's turn to the, to the third graphic, if you will. You'll see two triangles, typical development and the development that is, that occurs as a result of trauma. And folks, it's very easy to see that this epidemic turns our kids completely upside Cognition, their insight, their learning, their understanding, the typical behaviors that they should be experiencing, go all the way, that's the least thing on their mind. It's the least thing. They're focused on survival. They have to be focused on survival. They have to take care of themselves. So, the school, we become the frontline defense. They come to us, and we have to try to help them, to try to have to direct them, to try to tilt this triangle the best way that we can. We have had, there's been some research done, and what is being referred to is mindful meditation. And I talked to Dr. Mulay about that, and that makes me a little bit uncomfortable, I have to be honest. I'm going to say another term that might make some of us a little uncomfortable, and I'm very close to this, medical marijuana. When I hear that, the first thing that pops in your mind, or at least in mine, is a bunch of people sitting around smoking stuff and looking a little bit funny, but that's not the case when I broke down that barrier. But mindful meditation, also, in my mind, when Dr. Mulay talked to me about this, I said, "Whoa, Susan, we can't be doing this because I think what we're going to be putting in folks' mind, our folks' mind, is this, people sitting around, hmm, doing those kinds of things." And I know it's knee-jerking, it's kind of humorous, but we had a discussion about this. And I said, "Susan, we need to change that a little bit, to make it a little softer." So, after some discussion, she and I, and we're going to, we would like to introduce a concept of personal prep time. Sounds softer, doesn't allude to anything other than just personal prep time, personal preparation time and self-regulation time. But I would like to say to you that there's some research that shows that mindful meditation, that we're going to call personal prep time, increases attendance, increases engagement, and decreases violent behavior and discipline. And it's going to give us an opportunity to set our children up for some successes. How many times have you heard, "What are you thinking?" How many times have you said it as a parent? "What are you thinking? Get your head in the game. What are you thinking about? Why did you do that?" Well, if we take the time to give our children an opportunity to prepare for classwork, instead of saying, "Get your books out, open your books, let's number from one to six, and do this," or "Look on the board, copy this off," let's, let's take three minutes at the beginning of the class. We, athletes prepare. You don't just jump off the bus and go play football, "Hey, you stretch, you got to get the muscles ready." Why are we not doing that for our brains? That's a question I ask myself every day. I know when I do things, I have to prepare for this presentation. I practiced it a couple times, tried to make sure that I didn't mix my words up. Children are no different. These children coming from these traumatized homes aren't thinking about anything but survival. So, if we, if we don't take the time, we're just exacerbating the issue. So, why don't, why don't we take three minutes at the beginning of the class and say, "Class, this is math time. Let's think about add-ins. Let's think about multiplication. Let's put numbers in your head. Just think about it for a minute. While you're doing that, let's just breathe nice and normal and regularly." Those are the kind of things that I have had discussions with Dr. Mulay. When she comes back in March, we want to try, and that's why we're here this evening, is to inform you, these are the things, because we don't want you, as board members, to be side-swiped by, "What in the world are these schools doing out here with this craziness?" It may seem crazy, but I submit to you, board members, we're in a little bit of a different time. Traditional teaching, we have got to, we have to have, we need to rethink and give our children time to be successful. Why do we want to give our trauma students and all of our students this opportunity? Here's the why. A traumatized child is 15 times more likely to commit suicide. A traumatized child is 2.5 times more likely to be retained. A traumatized child is three times more likely to become an addict. I don't know about you, but I don't, I don't want to try to deal with those odds. I'm going to do everything that we can do as a system to make sure that we give our children every opportunity not to fall into this. I have a dear friend whose son overdosed Christmas Eve. It's brutal. It's brutal. It's non-discriminatory. The final thing I'd like to say about this is that this protocol, if we choose to support it and move forward with it, fits perfectly into our leader-in-being issue. When you think about being proactive, you're thinking about win-win. If you think about seek to understand and be, then be understood, and even if you're thinking about sharpening the saw, if we give our kids time, Larry Lazott said in effective school, "Given time, all children can learn." Maybe not at the same rate. Lord, look at the brains and look at the difference and look at the situations, but don't we owe them just a little bit of time? That's what we'd like to do when Dr. Mulay comes back in March, is to move forward and try some of these strategies that she has been trained on to show us, so if we can step up. We're not going to be able to afford to bring her back on a continuous basis, and she knows that, that's not her desire. She does want to train us so that we can put things into our schools to help our children so that we can be successful.
So, is this three minutes per class targeted at the children that are in danger? Or is it going to be school-wide, classroom-wide, every class period? At what level, in the grade school, middle school, high school?
Right now, Mr. Baker, we are only in the elementary and middle schools. Now, there has been some work done, some counseling done at the high school level. And I, I think we need to move cautiously, and that's a wonderful question, and we don't have it totally defined at this point, but I think we need to move a little baby steps. We have to walk before we can run and see how effective it is, and then broaden it as we go. That'd be the, be my best answer at this point.
Probably asking you medical questions if you can't answer them, that's fine. But in terms of some of these exhibits, like, what better term, tell, tell my background, that you showed, is there any way to reverse? I mean, obviously, these changes are fairly permanent.
Those are permanent.
They're permanent, the alcohol, heroin, and these changes. The brain development in a three-year-old, is any of that reversible?
We don't, I don't, I can't answer that, but I.
We got a bit. Top right on him. Anybody that can answer, can answer.
Yes. Research has shown that the brain can heal itself to a certain point, and other areas of the brain can take over for those areas that have been damaged.
Okay, but in this situation, this is an extreme graph, is that a CAT scan or MRI?
Yes, it is.
I mean, that, that's a pretty extreme example of a brain that's both undersized and underdeveloped.
Yes, sir.
As compared to a very normal, healthy brain.
Right.
But, you know, my question, I guess, goes a little bit deeper, and understanding these charts and understanding what this means, if, if we do what you're suggesting doing, but you have kids who are literally, their brains are hardwired, exactly opposite, their priorities are different, they're much more, to use the term reptilian, because their brains are focused on survival, I understand all that, how do you change that in three minutes a class period? I mean, does this start to help that? Because.
That's, that's our initial beginning, and that's what we, that's what we're trying to start, and then I want to segue back to Dr. Lowe because she has a goal for like three years. I'm talking about right now, how do we get the ball rolling? And this is, this is where we are with it. And Dr. Lowe's vision, and where we think we're going with funding and so forth and the other, is, I'm going to let her talk just a little bit to finish up, but these are all great questions. I will remember them, and I will be talking to Dr. Mulay about that, and I will come back and give you more information.
Because we all know, we all know, there's nobody in this room that doesn't understand the prices we're facing right now.
Right now.
It's not in two years or three, it's right now.
It is, yes.
It's today. It's today, and we can't, we can't continue to do just the things we've done and hope to meet this challenge. It is, and I think you all would agree, it is actually impossible with the resources we have, we have to do something different, and I applaud you for trying to do something. Anything we can do to make a little bit of difference with this certain population of students that are drug, alcohol, or traumatized, or all three, we have to do something.
And that's where we are. We're still gathering and trying things as we go through this. At the same time, and I wanna be straightforward with you, Dr. Malane is very passionate about it, and she pushed me to the limits, and Dr. Lowe will tell you, we were sitting in her office, and she wanted to come in and do just, and I said, "Ooh, this is Lincoln County, you gotta slow down just a little bit. This is West Virginia, you just can't come in and do all these things. We have to take baby steps so our communities understand what we're doing." And I think that's imperative as well, but very good questions, and I wish I had the medical background to share with you, but I can't get those answers for you, and will.
Thank you.
But Dr. Lowe does have, would like to finish up because she has, we had talked, and she has a little bit of a longer-range goal, I'm more of an immediate, this is what we're gonna try with the board's understanding.
Let me ask one thing before I...
Yes, sir.
As far as the procedure that each teacher would use it, would there be some training? Is that what we're...
That's what we're talking about, Mr. Priestley, yes, sir.
Because there may be some that might not utilize the three minutes appropriately.
And that's something that we have to, that's something we'll have to monitor and have those discussions about, but I can say this with some fair confidence, the ACEs test that our teachers took, and I took, was eye-opening. The reason I'm interested, so interested in it, is I didn't realize that I was the high ACEs scorer. Didn't know. But there's some things in my past that were really, I don't mean to be too personal, but were pretty traumatic, and it has probably affected the way I deal with people and the way I deal with things. So that realization has been very eye-opening with me and for me.
Well, just because everyone would just be on their own, it's part of...
No, it would, there would be, my, yes, there would be a structure, an overarching strategies, and a kind of a script. That's what I see. Now, we'll have to work with Dr. Malane, and I know there's other specialists out there, but she's been our primary source at this point.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
I'll be quick. How do you determine if this is at all successful? What are the benchmarks? Is it classroom behavior? Is, okay, you can sit down, she's a...
She's got my back.
You can sit down.
I have his back on this. We have not done anything countywide, everyone does this, but we have trained staff in every school and given them strategies that they could implement within their lessons already. And we continually see a decrease in our special education numbers because we are getting these children in SATs, we are finding out what they need, the teachers are brought in, they're encouraged to use these strategies, and we are helping them. And so, is it big numbers? No, but we are seeing a decrease, and we're seeing our SAT numbers grow, and that's not a bad thing, we know what we're facing, but we're able then to equip them to feel that they can try this and not just go, "I don't know what to do, so we need to come over here." So that's where we see success already. And overall, what you see, the successes, you see the turnaround within the classroom. You see teachers not pulling their hair out and wanting to know, "What are they gonna do next?" And you see students across the board progressing and succeeding. You see students having their academic and mental needs met when they come in. But even if that happened last night, I know when I come in here, I am safe, I am cared for, they want me to do well, my needs are met, and so I can do that today. And so, as we go forward with that, that's where we wanna get to. We can't change what they go home to, and we know that. And in small sections in which these types of approaches have been used, they see that, that they don't change what they have gone home to, but when they come in, they know, "I am safe, I am cared for, they want me to succeed, my needs are met, I can learn." And so, that's where we have to get enabled in to see kind of what you wanna see for improvement, because you will see improvement in test scores and daily benchmarks and those types of things.
Okay. What are you gonna do when they leave our legalized marijuana? So everyone, all your people know that a pregnant woman uses marijuana to affect the baby's brain for 27 years? And we're all sitting here, not griping because they're legalized marijuana, I'm guilty as y'all. We all should get our protest yesterday, because it does affect the newborn baby's brain, and also, it's a drug. I don't care what you say, it's a drug. So I've seen, a few years ago, and Bill probably remember this, a gentleman high on marijuana, he thought he was Jesus Christ. Will you tell me that's not a drug? But I guess, I mean, I'm really adamant about this, and these people know it. I just think it's a shame that we're sitting around not griping about them, trying to legalize marijuana, because we don't need another drug, we've got all the drugs in West Virginia we need.
My only response to that, Mr. Curry, is we can only take on the ones that we can take on at this point. And if that happens, then we'll have to address that as it comes to us. Right now, what we're trying to do is, with these opioids, is to provide whatever strategies we can for our babies. And I, you know, we can debate marijuana all, and I don't disagree with you entirely, you and I could have a discussion about that, but this one is the current.
I understand.
And I think that that's where we need to put our focus at this point, is the here and now.
Mr. McKeon.
We've had, we've had, yeah. Many conversations, I've participated with additional training, we had our administrative retreat, loaded back into some of Dr. Malane, she is very passionate about the work that she does.
Is Mr. McKeon passionate about this?
There's no question, there's a great need out there, the number of students that we're seeing, that we are now seeing.
Are we recommending this?
Yes, particularly the students in the primary grades, and particularly what we're seeing, one of the biggest issues right now, preschool, kindergarten, first grade, it's just, it's amazing. There's one, some of our agents, our administrators have to learn how to work with these students. It's needed, there's much more I wish we could do. Obviously, this is an issue not just here in Lincoln County, it's an issue not only in the state of West Virginia, across this country. This is kind of outside the box, what we're doing, it's gonna put us out there in front...
If we think, if we move cautiously...
It's all right.
And not get the cart before the horse, that we can be a leader, a leader in our state with this.
And once again, now, there won't be any additional cost of what's already been...
No, this cost has already been budgeted, already been budgeted for this year.
All right, anybody have any thoughts for the company?
Do we need to do something? Well, I'm ready to do that.
We've got some ideas, both short and long range.
Well, we have to start something, let's, maybe as we see benchmarks down the road, you can share this.
I'll go back to the drawing board and talk to Dr. Lowe and Dr. Malane and see if we can set up a baseline or some sort of, and we've already got, it sounds like it's already rolling to some degree, but...
I'm not trying to put that on you, because it seems like the entire educational system is based on benchmarks and achieving this, achieving that, and teachers aren't allowed to teach. That's my personal philosophy, teachers can't teach, you've gotta be this standard, that standard, you have to do it this way, with these materials, et cetera. So in this situation, you don't need benchmarks. This is kind of pioneering, cutting edge, trying something that's different. I just wondered, the answers you gave about actually observing children that are being taught some of these strategies, whether you're calling it this or not, and seeing the market changes with them, that's what I wanna hear. I don't, nothing you ever do is gonna be 100% effective, I mean, if you help, I mean, we're at 25% of our children falling to...
23.5.
So let's round to 25. If you help 10% of that 23.1% of them, then that's a huge, huge improvement, because this helps not only now, but down the road. If you can start early and make, reverse some of these changes now, change the way their brains are operating now, these are permanent, long-term changes. If you don't, you're stuck with this. Once that brain sets in that pattern, you're stuck with this for the rest of your life and you can't change it. That's why I'm glad you're doing this at a very young age, that is the groups you're targeting, and I hope something as simple as this, providing the things that you're providing, trying to teach the things you're trying to teach, has, and I can see how it would have a major effect, and I hope it does, but I didn't mean to constrain you and tell you to come back and tell me how you're gonna measure success, you measure it just the way you said it.
But I think, I think we need to make sure that we're having these conversations so that if you are approached by the community, if you're approached by someone, that you can say, "Hey, this is what they're doing, and this is why they're doing it."
Oh, I appreciate the information, I just don't, I didn't want you to feel like I was trying to put you on the spot or tell you, "You gotta show me mathematical, empirical, data, show me this success," we can't do that.
Okay, well, I think we all understand that. Benchmark made, I guess what I was trying to say, if you see evidence of successes, we'd like to hear those.
Without a doubt.
All right.
We like celebrating successes.
Certainly, certainly. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark, come on here. Next on our list is Teresa Ryan, our head and school nurse on implementation of State Board Policy 2027, standing for basic specialized healthcare procedures.
That's a mouthful.
It is, isn't it? We have been given copies of that policy, Teresa, so we've had the opportunity to look over, so we're just here to, what do you have to say this evening?
Well, last time I was here, we talked about epinephrine and Narcan, and we decided to wait and see what happened. Well, the policy that the state board took effect on November the 13th, so now, we need to discuss whether we want to be one of those counties that keeps Narcan on hand at school in case of an overdose of opioids.
Okay, let me ask, is this, are we just, as far as anything other than that, are we trying to develop a policy to think other, I don't know the correct term, but other medicines or something, or is it just that strictly Narcan we're talking about?
We are, last time we said, "Go ahead with the epinephrine." I've kind of hit a roadblock that we have to discuss about with, I thought that they would wanna change the language when they changed the policy, and they did not, so that greatly affects our cost.
I think we're really, we're still dealing with two issues.
Yeah.
Or more. I'm just trying to see what we're actually...
I guess, yeah, too. We need to revisit epinephrine.
Okay, so those two things. Now, is there presently a board policy related to either one of those?
No.
Okay, so we, this is the state board policy, now we're discussing the possible implementation of a county policy, whatever it might say, are those two drugs?
Yes.
What's the right term for that? Isn't that...
And there's more than just those two addresses, it talks about prescription medications and all kinds of things that we would also consider, but nothing that would be contentious.
But those things, you mean that we already have in policy?
Yes, we already have all that. The only changes really are stock epinephrine, and then whether we want to allow our bus drivers to administer epi pens if a child has that with them, and then the Narcan.
Okay, because I knew that those other drugs were the counter things, we already get policy for, that's why I was trying to understand exactly, you know, what we chose the policy, what we were... Okay, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. The snag I have here, we had talked before about the cost of epinephrine, and if you remember, you may not, I had emailed Becky King and asked her if we could use vials or ampules of epinephrine, since it would be only nurses administering that, and she said yes. She sent me back an email that said yes. However, as I review this policy, it continuously says epinephrine auto-injectors. So I think legally, we need some more clarification on whether or not it would have to be an auto-injector, because if it does, then that, the cheapest we can get auto-injectors are $387 for a pack of two. That greatly increases our cost.
Yeah, amazing, but do you have a rough idea, how many you would purchase in a year?
I'll bet, oh, he would expire.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know how many kids we ever, how many...
Well, we talked about putting one in every school, so that would, we would say 10, because you would want one here as well with the preschool. And so, that would be...
How many distant estimations on?
So you'd have about 10, you'd have five boxes at $387 a pack.
$6,000.
And the shelf life is what?
18 months.
18 months.
That may increase to 24 here soon, but 18 months is what it is currently.
You're talking about each bus driver possibly having one?
No, we're just talking about allowing bus drivers, that's a separate issue, allowing bus drivers to get little Johnny's epi pen out of his backpack and give it to him if he gets stung on the bus.
Now, for some students, do they already have this application?
They do. Our students who have already been diagnosed with an anaphylactic reaction are already prescribed epi pens, and dependent upon their age and accountability, they either have them locked up at school, or they carry them back and forth with them.
Do they purchase those themselves, with their insurance or something?
They do.
So these that you would have on-site, are they for an emergency or somebody else?
They would be for an emergency, for a first-time reaction, or for somebody who forgot theirs that day.
What's stock epinephrine?
That's us keeping it on stock at school.
Okay.
So if, you know, all of them I have in my office right now are prescribed to a certain student. If I had a stock epinephrine, then it would just be prescribed to me by our physician, our oversight physician, and I could use it on anybody, but neither that.
I mean, who drafted this? Is this, I mean, I can't, no offense, I appreciate your intelligence, but I can't believe that someone involved in the drafting of this policy didn't understand the draconian effect of using the term epinephrine auto-injectors versus epinephrine. Seems like someone involved in the drafting of this may have owned a lot of stock in mine pharmaceuticals. I mean, that's, you're talking, what, 50 cents a dose?
I thought that myself.
This is the state board policy, so, and I came from Charlie.
Well, that's good. Who's on the state, oh, well, oh, sorry, you know, I really didn't know that.
I guess I'm the state board.
There you go.
Yeah, consider that I can get, you know, epinephrine for $17.11 a single dose.
This is just ridiculous.
I know, I know.
$200 a dose versus, how much?
17.11.
But we may get around this, right?
We may, and I need to, we need more communication. Like I said, at the time we talked last, I was under the impression that this wording was going to change, but it did not. So I kind of wanted to make sure that you guys wanted to go ahead and pursue it.
Okay, with the worst-case scenario, it'd be about $4,000 a year.
No, no, I'd start using them.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that most of the kids are gonna bring their own on occasional basis, you might have to restock it, I mean, so we increased it by 50%, $6,000 then.
I'm thinking if the kids have them at home, and they know we have them at school...
They're not gonna bring them.
They're not gonna bring them. I mean, is that realistic?
Yeah, we try to get around that now by, you know, of course, they're not allowed to go on field trips and that kind of thing unless they bring them to school, but I can't guarantee that on, you know, Monday morning, there's no field trip scheduled, that little Sally doesn't leave hers at home.
What happens right now if a child doesn't bring theirs? What happens? And they have a problem?
Then I have to make a decision, and I do everything for them that I can to ease their breathing while I call 911, and then if it... And then if it gets really bad, I have to decide whether to grab somebody else's epi pen and use it on them or wait on nine-one-one to get there.
That's what you need to do with Narcan. Wait on them to.
Okay. Anything further about this particular one to, it's just, uh, now-
It's kinda, unfortunately, I kinda feel like we really aren't getting anywhere on this one.
Okay, so at some point here, we'll have to decide if, um, a policy is gonna be developed that would address this, if being allowed or by policy not being allowed, right?
Right.
All right.
But then the second issue with the epinephrine is whether we want to allow our bus drivers to administer a child's personal epi pen to them if they get stung in or out of school.
Discreet with bus drivers? I mean, uh, so you're not worried about aides during, because they're already trained and aware of that?
We already trainer aides. There's, you know, um, there's several people in a school trained already to do that. But a few years ago, they took that away, that ability away from the bus drivers.
Yeah, at one time they did do it.
Mm-hmm.
Or do you think, uh, is it mandatory for a bus driver to do it or would be optional? I mean, what if I was a driver and I did feel comfortable? Has that been addressed somewhere?
Um, I believe that it's optional. Because here's the thing, it's, it's based upon the, the certified school nurse's, uh, training and recommendation. If you don't wanna give it, you're not gonna give it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it doesn't do me any good to train you if, if you're uncomfortable with that. Most of our bus drivers are fine with this. And they're already trained in their CPR and first aid class to do it. They're just not allowed to do it yet by our policy.
And the administration of this is, is it not very difficult?
No. You pull off the cap and you stab them in the leg.
That's the beauty of the epi pen as opposed to any other.
Yes. Anybody, yeah.
In full can do it.
Yeah. And the directions are right on there, that's why I tell people. But, um, it's not hard. You don't have to remove clothing, you don't, you don't have to measure a dose. You don't have to do anything. You just pull the cap off and stick it.
So, the epi pen issue is, you know, whether we wanna purchase these and have them available on all sites, school sites? And second part of that is whether we wanna permit drivers to do it.
Yeah.
Or administer it. Okay.
Here's a third issue you all mentioned, maybe, there may be a way around the, I, I just like to see the most good done for the least amount of money.
Well, yeah.
And anyway, be that as it may, section twelve point eight of this provides, you know, immunity for people who have, um, qualified or been qualified by the school nurse to do this, but only if you use an auto-injector.
Yes.
So-
So, the bus drivers will be covered that way.
Yeah, so long as you're, I mean, I, I don't see that we have a choice as this is written. If we, we, and, and like most state laws, you have to adopt this pretty much part and parcel. Can't imagine we can take what we like and change what we don't much.
I think it's discretionary.
I mean, a lot of this is, is discretionary. We don't have to do anything in here, but to the extent we decide we want to make epinephrine injectors available, I think we have to pretty much follow the policy.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, the same thing as to the other thing that we'll talk about in a minute. It won't be near as pleasant a conversation. Um, but I, I don't see that we have an option as it's written. There may be a workaround, but it's, it's not gonna be covered by the liability. I mean, the liability tables provision twelve point eight unless it's an injector, an auto-injector.
If it's done, then administered the other way, is it more difficult?
Yes. To do it the other way, the way that I had it figured, we would do it. Once you have, you have a little glass ampule and you have to pop it off, you have to break the glass and you have to pull out the medicine through a filter needle to filter out any glass, uh, particles that might be in there. You have to change the needle over to a regular needle and then you have to adjust the dose as you're supposed to. So, only in ours could do that.
That would be my next question.
Yes.
Anything else on epinephrine? Now, uh, before we get to epinephrine, is, what, do you have a recommendation as far as this, uh, epinephrine? As to how you think the school system should do this?
Well, number one, I think we should allow our bus drivers to administer epi pens.
Now, you answered number B, you're led to that.
That's the most likely place is on a bus to get stung by something.
Yes, yes. The nurse in me says, yes, we want an epi pen in every school, but I'm cheap. I'm a school nurse. I've worked with a little bit for a long, long time and I wanna get things as cheap as possible. So, if we can get around that, that's great. If we can't, we've never had an instance of a first-time anaphylactic reaction.
Well, from what I understood, if we don't do it that way, then the bus drivers think that they did.
Well, no, no, the bus drivers, they, they can still, they can still administer a child's personal epi pen.
Oh, just the personal, they just couldn't?
If my Ezekiel had, had an epi pen and he had it in his backpack and got stung, then they could pull out and give it to him if he was too tore up to do it himself, if we allow that.
The bus drivers could, could do it with injectors only, but those would be provided by the?
By the students.
Students, okay.
Now, the other part is, is stickier. We just have to, you know, if, if we don't do that, then we just have to be more diligent in making sure that our kids come with their epi pens like they're supposed to every day at school. And then, um, be very, um, observant when, when students start having problems and, and catch that quick enough to get an ambulance to them if they have a first-time reaction.
Is that there's an epi pen in every school?
I think so. I think, I'm pretty sure we have an epi pen in every school.
Do you have to replace it every eighteen months or whatever?
They, yeah, they replace it as theirs expire, then they bring us in a new one.
Okay, but now, when you say there's one in every school, is that somebody's individual one?
Yeah, somebody's individual.
Not wanted? So, the student somehow, or their parent or insurance, or somebody provides one every year or two for them?
So, if somebody didn't bring theirs that day, you would get somebody's and go ahead and give them somebody else's epi pen if they had a reaction?
We're talking about putting her on the spot. Some questions you're asking are not a half.
Narcan, you're gonna-
Well-
Well, we'll ask you about Narcan. I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
It, it's, it, it would be hard not to do that. It's hard to sit there and watch somebody die knowing that you have something that could save their life, even if you do go up before the disciplinary board. So, you just have to, you don't get like that.
At this point, you've never had an instance for this, that you've had to do that?
I haven't, never. We, we have not had, since I have been here in twenty-two, twenty-three years, we have never had a, a person have a first-time reaction at school. Or lucky, or, yeah, I don't know.
All right, so there, we're either gonna permit this up, but then we still have to decide if we're, for those that have their personal ones, if the drivers make it.
Yes, and I think that's, I think that's important. They, they should be able to. Like I said, they're already trained to, and, and years ago, we used to train them to do that. And then things changed and they weren't allowed to do that anymore.
I mean, not every driver has a, a student that, that has one.
Here's a question. This is all permissive. It says drivers can do this if properly trained. Do we require all drivers to do it if an epi pen's available? Can we do that? Because the flip side of this that I see is if we have a driver who for whatever reason doesn't want to administer a child's epi pen, but we have every other driver that, that would have in that situation, the lawyer in me says, that's liability.
I, I don't think we could force a driver to do it if he doesn't want to.
Under this, the driver that administers it via an auto-injector has the same immunity that the school nurse or any other person does. But, hmm, that's, that's really sad. I mean, you're, you're creating a real slippery slope with this if the drivers, I mean, i- if it's permissive. I mean, realistically, like you said, nobody's gonna stand there and watch someone die when they have the means to save their life readily available. But it's, it's something to think about.
On the flip side of that, though, is you, you, are you negligent in some way if you don't do anything?
Well-
You know, I think it's-
And, and that would be the same thing as doing nothing would be the same thing as not administering epi pens.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so-
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Well, but if you have a driver that doesn't wanna do it and is, I, I, you know, and won't do it, and if we would somehow be liable for that, then how would that be any worse than us not permitting them to do it at all and have the problem?
Well, if drivers aren't allowed to do it.
Well, but they're all allowed to do it and-
That's what I'm saying, if none of them are allowed to do it, no one can do it. Now, my thought is you, you do the greatest good for the greatest number of kids.
Right.
So, you permit the drivers to do it. And what's the, I mean, astronomical odds that one driver, the one driver that needs to administer one isn't gonna wanna do that? It's astronomical odds, but it's, it, it just, my real question was can you, can you compel them to do it to save a life? And the answer is probably no, you can't. But they wouldn't stand there and let someone die anyway, or sit there.
Well, a lot of saying is, if you don't permit them to do it by policy, you know, it seems to me like you would be more prone to, for liability as to why you didn't at least take some steps towards addressing that.
Okay. I don't think you're having a problem with this. Your problem is, how many epinephrine pens are we gonna have? Where do we have to have them based on your recommendation would be my thought.
We, we, we've talked about this. Nurses have talked, me and the teachers have talked about this, you know? What would you do in this case? You know, and years ago, before we had as many nurses as we do now and, and we were spread out more and, and we weren't available when things happened. You know, what, what would you do here and what would you do here? And, you know, for the most part, for the most part, our employees love the job and love their kids and they're gonna do whatever they can to, to save their life.
So, you know, whatever we end up doing here, eventually a policy will be developed. It'll be on public review for a month. Then we could hear pros and cons of whatever we end up putting in policy or what you recommend us to put in there. I think is where I'm leaning. Um, so, if we say we wanna do this, then we'll get, you know, feedback on it, one way or the other. The, right now, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we, the bus driver would be something we'd wanna allow, probably based upon their desire to, you know, to do that. And like you said, most of them will probably do it anyway. They're trained to do it, would be trained. And the issue would be in our policy, could we, um, are we gonna stock the schools with the, uh, injectors or are we not? I think that's what we have to make a decision on. It looks to me like you're talking five thousand dollars a year, maybe, or something. Is this, this come out of a regular budget? Do you have a special account or something?
That's a, that's a Ricky question.
I thought you were looking at Mr. Ellis back there.
Raise duck.
We, we have been very blessed over the past three years to find some grant opportunities that have allowed us not only to work on some of our initiatives, but when the nursing money stopped coming in, that we were able then to completely just take care of what we needed to take care of. Um, if it would come down to that's what we need to do, we would make it happen. We're commanded to be good stewards of money and, and I believe that our department does that well. Um, and we would be able to find that.
Okay, good, good answer.
Point blank, I'll ask the question this way then. Given your twenty-plus years of experience without one initial anaphylactic reaction, given the availability of at least one epinephrine auto-injector in each school to the best of your knowledge, and given the discretion that you would have to administer an auto-injector without regard to the source, do you feel like we need? Let's just be blunt, do we need to stock these pens in each school? Or do you feel like one will be available if necessary that could be replaced if needed? You're in the best position to tell us what to do here. You've already told us, you, I just had to put you on the spot and make you tell us exactly like that.
I usually try to prepare for the, the least possibility, anything that could possibly happen. But honest to goodness, no. I, I, I just don't. It, it's never happened. If we could count on, and here's the kicker. If Carol has an anaphylactic reaction and I grab Rowdy's epi pen and administer it to her, how am I gonna replace Rowdy's epi pen? That's, that's what we, we get to.
And what, what if he needs it the same day?
Exactly. And we've had that, that argument before. I said, well, I guess I would just scoop that child up and put him in a room and put people around him to guard him, you know? Um-
But realistically, if that happened and you needed to replace an epi pen, you would find money to spend to buy a five thousand dollars' worth of them if need be. If we have, we saved the child's life, Jeff, couldn't we come up with two hundred dollars spur of the moment to replace it? Jeff's paying for it. I, I mean, it's, it's, I, I think we could have a contingency fund that would enable you to go buy a two-pack of those immediately if you needed them.
Yeah, it would be a fun.
That would be a good idea.
Now, is it, when you buy the two-pack, must they stay together? So, you could buy a two-pack and serve two schools?
You could. The reason they come in a two-pack is that usually, once you give an epinephrine injection, thirty minutes later, you usually need a second one. So, they give you that just in case ambulance doesn't get there.
Do its thing, okay.
So-
All right. So, we're trying to decipher, you said, you really don't think that it's necessary to do this? That we could get by with-
Deep down, deep down, I really don't. The, the safest thing to do would be to buy one and put one in every school. That's the safest thing to do. But I've been here a long time and we've never had this.
I mean, that's based on the odds.
So, what we need to do is let the bus drivers administer these once they have received appropriate training?
Yes.
And make sure you've got the money to buy a two-pack immediately available to you?
Yes.
Like, if we take you to the car?
And you'll go with me to the nursing board when they call me on the car.
I will, I will step outside my role as a board of education member and I will represent you personally.
Now, I think if this were, are you wanting to delegate this policy development to Teresa? No question.
Teresa, I've been looking at this pretty closely and something's driving me crazy.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the student's medication is in for epi pen, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, this policy says that the, uh, this, this is picking on something that's driving me crazy. The policy says that the student's epi pen, uh, must be, uh, put in a, you know, safe place, refrigerator or something, and locked up, correct?
If they, if they are not evaluated and deemed capable of carrying it and protecting it themselves.
Okay, well, Paul, uh, on medication storage inventory eleven point one, it says it's supposed to be in secure, locked, clean cabinet or refrigerator. But when you get to the epi pen that the school would furnish, it says it is to be in a secure, unlocked location. Makes no sense to me.
That's if you're gonna allow everybody in your building to be trained to come do that, which we were not being comfortable with doing yet, anyway.
So, this is the reasoning behind it?
Yes. I'm not, I'm not thrilled with it, but it, it is what it is. And, and I, and honestly, I helped write the very first one. And the very first, I didn't agree with it when we wrote it, but it was the safest thing that we could write at the time.
Were you a, a part of the state committee that bound it?
The ve- the very first one back in ninety-something. Yeah.
All right. What else you got, Boris?
The discussion on Narcan.
I get something to drink, I'm gonna be talking a lot here.
Don't let him.
I have not got something to drink. I didn't want you to have that.
Here's just yes or no. And we can do it in- And we can do it in two different forms. If we would do it in the injectable form, we can get it for, it's nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents a dose. That comes in a ten-pack, which will put one everywhere, a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. But in the meantime, the Lincoln County Health Department has started distributing Narcan kits. You go through the training and then they will give you the kit. And in my discussion with the Health Department, Dr. Bowen has agreed to be our physician oversight for when we have to order drugs and needles and that kind of thing, which we haven't done in a long time. But he's going to do that for us. They said that we could come in and be trained and we could get our Narcan that way. So we wouldn't even have to buy it. So.
All right, and in this policy, if these, if those counties that choose to do this, it's at their discretion, who is allowed to administer? Do you have thoughts about that?
We are very cautious and we went with nurses only, yes.
So you're talking about nurses only, so if you were to, we were to do this, what would be our cost for each nurse to?
Well, we talked about, when we discussed this before, we talked about putting it in every school versus giving it to a nurse to carry because we travel from school to school.
And only the nurses will be approved to administer?
Yes. So, you know, when I travel from Lincoln County High School to Ranger and back on Mondays, then, you know, along the way, I wouldn't have it with me. And I would have it at the high school and then I would have it at Ranger when I go there.
And if you're getting this, if you take the Health Department's training and you get the Narcan through the Health Department, how many doses can each of you nurses get?
I believe that it is a two-pack. So there are five of us. That would give us ten doses and ten schools.
And if you use a dose, would it be replaced when you just buy a ten-pack?
We could probably get it replaced somehow.
The cost doesn't seem to be an issue.
It's not, I mean, two hundred, twenty dollars a dose.
It's not that much.
Have you ever had the, has it ever been necessary to administer this pen?
I have.
Anyone students? I don't mean by you guys. I mean by EMTs or anybody else that's coming to the school.
To, no, not to my knowledge.
Not in this county?
Well, I'm talking in schools only. I know it's outside the schools, but I know that it wasn't you all. I'm just saying.
It has, it has, I believe, at schools in other counties, but not here.
Okay. All right, now, and our, refresh my memory on why we decided it wasn't wise for you all to carry it with you rather than keeping it at the school. I don't think we did decide that. Well, I mean, I don't know.
We didn't decide that, but we talked about it as far as.
What are the pros and cons of that?
Just in protecting our nurses license and the liability of the Board of Education for if we, you know, helped somebody on the side of the road and, you know, we would be in transit. We'd still be an employee of the Board of Education at the time that we did that.
Okay, so if cost isn't an issue and we don't want to put you all at any risk, then it's just a matter of how it would be stored at the school and would it be secure from others having access?
We have locked boxes in every school.
This doesn't have to be refrigerated or anything like that? Fairly long expiration period or?
It can have. That's the problem that they're having at the Health Department. They ended up with some doses that have gone up pretty soon expiration date, but they're working with Cavill Health Department to try to get those switched out.
Yeah, because they use one of them every day.
Yes, they use theirs rather quickly.
And your thoughts would be, should this be permitted, that it would only be nurses that could administer, right? And it's stored at the school, nurses only administer it, and we're talking about a couple hundred dollars if we did it.
And initially, it wouldn't be anything.
Well, that's true, you got that. In fact, for a cost, when you take, if you, this happened, you had to give someone this. And some of them get violent when they come out of it, I understand. So how do you propose to protect the nurses if that happened?
Well, in all of our schools, we have what we have labeled the Code Blue team, and which those teams will be meeting tomorrow for Stop the Lead training if you want to come over at one thirty in the Commons. But when there is a medical emergency of any kind in the school, a Code Blue is called and all of the people on that team converge on that location. There's enough people there at that time to take care of whatever would happen. As I think on my team at the high school, all of the administrators, if available, and then four other staff members, myself and our resource officer.
Yeah, Derek, Dana, and you all.
Derek, yeah. Derek, Dana Sue, my little girl.
Did you see the segment with the police department where the chief refused to let his officers give it? Where he said he didn't have that many officers and these people come out there kicking and fighting and that he wouldn't have his officers hurt for that reason?
Well, I know that the last time I talked to them, airham one police officers were not carrying it either. So for those reasons. But at the same time, the little girl that I had who had a seizure last spring in the bathroom, when I gave her her medicine, she came out of there fighting, you know, so happened.
I'm okay with giving it to our students, but somebody pulled in our parking lot and the nurses going out there and giving them Narcan, I'm not, I'm not okay with that at all.
I mean, in this policy, it also alludes to being given at the school in this time. Because you all would be there then, right?
We're not always there, no.
So we're just talking about during the school day. So being here, it alludes to, you know, after their extracurricular activities, things one of the evening, you know, it doesn't seem that that would relate to this. Because you all weren't going to be there.
I mean, all of us have children in the system, so most of us are at functions in the evening, but not in official capacity.
Well, and there's a lot of different activities going on all the places at that time. So it seems like for the most part, though, we could just at the schools during the instructional school day or during school day, not necessarily. Some kid did do this, could we insist or force them to go to rehab?
Um.
Get part of our program?
I'm not sure about how that would work because I know now in our drug testing policy at the high school, if they test positive, then they are given some options and they need to do some type of rehab or whatever to stay out of trouble.
I think that should be included.
They would have to come before us, wouldn't they, Jeff? I mean, if they.
Depending on the situation, yes, because what I understand, sometimes it can be a contact kind of thing, right?
Right, but I mean if they ingested it.
They are, yeah.
On itself, yeah.
That might be, as a development, you might have to do a little research on what Fred's saying. I know, I've just read recently in the legislature, this is an issue of whether it's even legally permissible to make someone who comes out of one of these, if they happen to separate, if one person does it three times in a day and all this, you're mandating that they be taken somewhere because of that. And it's being debated right now whether that's even permissible, if the law allows you to do that. So I think we could look into see if we could, there may be something short of, you know, taking them incarcerated or something that you could require them to do some kind of re, you know, something.
Well, I think as a board, if I'm going to have to administer Narcan to a student or a staff member, we should have some recourse there on what we do with them following that.
I'm just asking, all I'm saying is we need research to make sure you're allowed to do that. Because it's, they, I've just read recently in the President's legislative session, this has been discussed. Those other police officers and law, you know, we've heard many times from them that we had the same person over and over again, we let them go, they go home, then later on happens again. And they have not been, they did not have the ability to force them to go into rehab or go be incarcerated or something like that.
Now, I don't think we could, I mean, the only reason we can drug test people, we drug test is because we have the ability. If they don't submit to the alcohol and drug testing, then they lose their extra privileges, that being driving or playing in sports. In this situation, I don't, I don't think you could require someone who was administered Narcan to go to rehab, to go to educational counseling. What I think would absolutely happen is if you administered Narcan at Lincoln County High School tomorrow, there would be an investigation at multiple levels of whether that was necessary and why, you know, what the person had taken, where it was taken, was it on school property, was it? I think all that would be investigated and there will be discipline for the action leading up to the near death. But I don't, I don't know, given the conversations we had about our drug and alcohol policies, you can make them do anything afterward.
They could look into it here.
Yeah, that doesn't hurt to look, but my knee-jerk reaction is, I mean, maybe from a policy perspective, we could, but I don't think from a punishment perspective.
Well, I'm saying legally, the, in police enforcement, you know, law enforcement can't mandate they do that.
Yeah.
What can we do? But we can, you know, that could be something to look at. Okay.
Now, I think if you're faced with, you know, of course, there's a mandatory counseling or facing ten days expulsion for illegal drugs, you probably opt for counseling.
That's where, that's where.
I think that's effectively how you do it.
And we could incorporate that in our policy.
Or not. I mean, that's the way it would work anyway.
Right, it's what makes it work in this level.
Yeah.
Well, you all can discuss that as you develop the policy, if that worked certainly.
Okay, now, we got a question. Just like, just like Carol and Steve and Fred have read this policy, what gets me is this, here we go, I just read it a second ago. I gotta find it, I gotta find it. I just read it a second ago. Here we go, it's in twelve ten, about sixty percent of that paragraph.
Non-medical school personnel?
The opioid antagonists are authorized to administer an opioid antagonist to a student, school personnel, or to a person during regular school hours at a school function, at an event, on school property, blah, 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 blah. So basically, this says you can, you can shoot anybody up with Narcan that happens to be on school property. As I read this. Carol and I disagree. We don't like that dude, Carol. Does anybody else like that? I mean, I don't feel real sorry for a druggie that stumbles on the property after he shot up over on the highway, manages to stumble across the bridge and we find him out there. It's like you have an obligation to administer anything to that person.
Staggering our ballgame.
Well, but once again, they aren't going, that was the reason I asked that. In all likelihood, it's a school thing and these after-school activities, they aren't going to be there, so it wouldn't relate to that. It could on occasion possibly, but normally it's going to be a school day thing because they aren't going to be at all ballgames. So if something happens at a ballgame, there's not a nurse there, so they call the EMTs.
And I don't have a key to everybody else's stuff, just like everybody else.
That would be just like right now, if it occurred tonight, they would call nine-one-one.
Right.
It's really, although it could happen, I don't think, the question is during the school day, if maybe a parent comes in.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, that could be a potential. Well, that's what Riley was saying.
I'm just saying you are, not that you acquired.
Yeah. You have a seed, again, you gotta look away, this law is written. There's no punishment for administering it. In fact, you get immunity. But if you don't, you still have potential liability. So the, here, the safest course of action at twenty dollars a pop is anybody who happens to be around, looks like they might be ODing on an opioid, you need to shoot them up. Because, you know, if you exercise your professional discretion and judgment, you have immunity under the state's policy. You cannot be sued, consequently, the school system can't be sued for your actions. So the safest course of action is to give anyone who appears like they needed a Narcan shot. But that sticks in my craw. It just, I mean, I just, I don't like that, but that's, we go back to what you didn't like, you know, about that first policy, the safest course of action. But if you read this, that's what I say you need to do.
But I remember, I don't think everything from previous discussion, but I remember that a school nurse takes a note and there was something in there, you know, if I'm sitting here, if you guys tell me I can't do that, I'm probably going to do it anyway.
All nurses, all nurses take that on, you do.
So, you know, I think that factors in, and I don't disagree with that.
And Riley's going to represent you.
Oh, no, 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 that was, that's the epinephrine.
I'm on my own.
Narcan.
No, Narcan, you got a broad lot of tech, you just shoot them all up, that's right. Hit everybody with Narcan that you think may be ODing.
Narcan, you don't need.
Chase it down the street with a needle.
That's where you keep carrying on.
Clearly, in this situation, given the cost produced, given the discretion, given the place that you're going to locate it, I mean, going to locate the medication, the people who may be there that are authorized to administer it, a lot of my concerns, I'm just blowing them up for the sake of pointing out these issues that can come up. Because if you don't think about these things and you're faced with these situations, then you have that downtime. And in a situation like this, a minute could make a lot of difference, can't it? I mean, it could be all the difference in a life or a death. You know, it's easy to sit here in these chairs where it's nice and warm and say, you know, if that druggie from across the street staggers in at lunch hour, don't hit him with a shot of Narcan. It's a lot harder to be on the ground and say, not be able to do that, no matter who you are, particularly someone who's taken the medical oath that you as a nurse have taken.
Well, it's a lot harder when you know that that druggie has a little girl in kindergarten and a little boy in second grade.
Well, now, the third time he or she staggers in for a shot of Narcan, you might be a little slow to go get the needle that time, but, you know, everybody's tied to a mistake or two, right? Lockdown, lockdown. Anyway, you are going to draft a policy for us to consider and be published and, you know, just, just keep in mind some of the concerns we have. Otherwise, this policy may do it for a long time.
Ms. McGee, anything else on this?
There are some counties out there that are doing these things we talked about.
They are, and what I was surprised about was I did a quick look this evening before I came over here and Cavill County doesn't have a policy, at least up on their website, yet. And I would think that they would.
Cavill County's going to provide a room, even clean towels, clean needles, Narcan and people to observe them what time they shoot up.
Well.
As you know, this policy requires one works to develop.
Or any other illegal drugs.
Even clean towels, clean needles, and somebody there to give them Narcan when they're helping shoot.
Barbara, yeah.
Just going to provide them a big room, a warm room, a place. Just makes me sick.
I know, and I, you know, I hate, our health department was given a lot of grief when they come out with these, where they were training everybody to use the Narcan kits, you know, and people really downed them. But it's the thing that the state has told them to focus on and they had a choice of things that they could do to do that. And one of them was to do a needle exchange and they refused to do a needle exchange. So then they did this other thing and they got slammed for it, but it's the worst of two evils, you know?
It is a slippery slope, Mary. It is, but, okay, do you have any questions as to kind of where we are, are we all on the same page of what we? Ms. McGee, you on the same page? We're all on the same page? Okay, good. Thank you, Teresa.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Wasn't as bad as you thought it was. Had a much more supportive audience than the last time, didn't you?
I'm in a better mood than I was last time.
That's that word you used, Kirk, about Brandon?
Personal prep time.
Personal prep time.
I think that last time.
She went back there and meditated.
That's it.
Allow people to put that on more steam.
I was very stressed.
We may have to start board meetings. We may have to start a board meeting, so. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis, the financial update.
I'm not going to talk about drugs at all. We'll be brief.
How about people who are traumatized, maybe you are.
I, I've been traumatized, you know, for sure. I didn't listen to everything Kirk had to say, so I'm really confused about this meditation and when it's supposed to happen.
We can have-
But I'm going to be here early in the morning.
I won't, you're all going to have that in one ear, what are you calling it?
Principals, maybe. We're going to back the board and start it.
Please, don't take that risk. Okay, Ray?
The problems we got today are a lot different than the problems we had when we were rising in school, that's for sure.
You just had to worry about people like me, well.
Yep, I had to worry, I had to fear the paddles. Yeah, that was, watching somebody get paddled and lifted up off the ground was a big deterrent to doing anything wrong in class. I saw that happen, you, you were the principal.
I carried it in my backpack.
It looked like it hurt to me.
Lifted him off the ground.
I've seen it.
Okay, let's go on to finance.
Um, I, I don't have a lot to say. Uh, last time, I, I think I told you about the cash, we had a lot of cash. Towards February, it would be going down, and that's happening. I don't think we're going to get as low as I did last year, which was around two million dollars. I'm going to draw down some funds tomorrow, and that'll help us out, state aid, we ought to be fine. Right now, we're sitting at three point six million, you can see at the end of, uh, December, we're at four point seven. So, if I could have had another couple of days, I could have given you January numbers, but I probably won't close the month till tomorrow or Friday. So, we're around three point six million, which is really, we're within like a, a hundred thousand of where we were last year at this time. But I think I'd already drawn down a lot of money last year by now, so I'll have that for the federal programs. I'll draw that down, we'll collect it over the month of February. Uh, W twos and ten ninety nines are out, they were out in timely fashion for the most part. W twos are a little early, you got your ten ninety nines, I think, the last forty million. But the budgeting process will be starting, what will we have in our meeting next month? Then I'll start the process of the budget for next year. Hopefully, I can get that done instead of, last year, the first time I ran through that, it took me a while to do that budget. Well, now that I have understanding how we was works, I think we can get that process done a lot earlier and have our board meeting to approve the budget. Late April or first part of May, that's a goal. I've set a lot of goals that don't always come to fruition, but we'll be close. Um, Jeff and I met with county assessor the other day. And what was the number that he gave us? A little bit lower. Not very much from where we were at last year, which is still below the levy call, you know, looking forward to next year. I think our levy call for the excess levy is three point five million, something like that, so it'll put us about three point three or three point two five or something. It, it wasn't that much of a drop off, because that could change.
Now, this current year, we're in now the budget, now, I know you've heard it about maintenance before, where Mr. Ghazi's budget for, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars a year had been decreased to eighty or something.
No, no, it was the capital improvement, yeah.
So, I mean, that's in the current year we're in right now, is that correct?
Yeah.
Uh, so, it was, is it two hundred and eighty was placed in there, am I correct, Ben?
No, we put two hundred thousand in there every year, is what you've done, out of this levy. This year, we put eighty-three thousand.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so there was a-
We, we brought, so, we'll have to see what the final numbers will be. Maybe things can change, that may go up, but we'll have to figure out what categories we're going to cut.
Well, my point is, all I wanted to say was this, should these revenues come in, uh, you know, enough revenue comes in to meet the levy call, won't you have to reimburse those different categories?
That would, I don't think that's written into that levy that way, but we most, we can.
Well, no, I'm not sure that it isn't required. A levy, you know, when you pass a levy, you're, you're saying we're going to spend these amount of dollars, assuming that we collect this much money. And, uh, if you do not think you're going to get it, obviously, you can't meet that component of it, and then you have to decrease it. All I'm saying is, if we find that we were actually, if we did receive enough money that stated in the levy call, it seems to me like you have to make sure you address each one of those that you stated them.
That would make a lot of sense to do that.
That's, 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 yeah.
I mean, we can do that.
Well, we don't know that that's the case now or anything, obviously.
We'll know next, around, around the end of the year. Yeah, we're, we're a little above on our collections from, from last year, but as I told you, I think at the last meeting that I talked, we had really good tax checks in October and November. September was really bad, but when I started looking at the detail of the October and November checks, what made those better than the previous year was the fact that there was prior year collections. And for some reason, people were paying their taxes from last year to this year, they were paying it a year late. Then, when our checks came in in December and January, they were lower, they were much lower. And so, after we met with the assessor, I, I sent an email to the sheriff's office and asked about that, and what the rest of the year would look like. And I was told that the December, January checks normally are low, but the February collections, well, and February would be low, but our February collections increased, February and March and April, and our tax checks will go up for those months. And that's what happened last year, we had, we had large checks.
Riley explained to us that March and April in particular are part of your costs.
So, the, the checks will go up, I'll be interested to see if they're larger than what they were last year. Right now, we're above.
Well, we'll just have to wait and see until the dust settles, then we can, might as well get to make any adjustments, especially the excess levy, because it was voted upon, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. But that, that's really it, um, you know, just the cash and where we're at with the levy. And you can see the numbers, there's a tax revenue five year, and that's up to, through the end of December for each of those years. And you can see we're about sixty thousand above last year, where we were at at this time. But two years ago was a really good year, and we're still behind that by eighty thousand. So, we're, we're not where I thought we would be. I thought we would be a little bit less than where we are, but I think a lot of it was due to prior year collections.
This has to keep a thinking process.
When is the levy due again for a vote? Next, next spring or forever, okay?
Yeah, that's something in the next few months. We have to make a decision on what our levy will be and when we're going to send it to the voters for approval. Anything else from Mr. Ellis, if anyone? Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Seeing of drugs, you know.
Just watch, Ms. Ryan, she's liable to inject you. If you suspect he's out of the everybody running up you, just be down the deck. His target's not as large, because he's dwindling away to nothing, isn't he? He's still there. Okay, let's go to the administrator, say, have a motion, please. Carol? Fred? Mr. McGee?
Item A, the following college students perform observations in Lincoln County Schools' spring semester. Item B, we need to revise, uh, the wording. It should read approval to post a halftime special education aide position at Ranger Elementary School period. So, take off the remainder of the current school.
Okay.
And that's, that's all we have.
All right, so, anybody have any comments, questions about those? Okay, uh, so, is it an all vote to approve these as amended? Okay, finance section? Riley?
Sue?
Larry? Okay, Ray again.
Um, A, scheduled invoices totaling eight hundred eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. That list is attached. If you got any problems, just, if you see any issues, just let me know. Uh, B, budget supplements totaling eight million eight hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and one cent. C, budget transfers totaling three hundred and three thousand four sixty-one and fifty-seven cents.
Everyone's had the opportunity to look at, uh, somebody had it in fact. Boy, somebody's a beeping up the store. Randy, turn a little lever on the laptop side, I'll silence that lady. We're just texting. Okay, is that an all yes on the finance?
Yes.
Personnel motion, please. Fred?
Sue?
Larry? Mr. Limbo?
Okay, item A, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item B, leave of absence. Item C, retirement and resignations. Uh, we abolished the two twenty, I explained that the last time, but we reposted it as two twenty. And then we also rescind the resignation of Alan McCollum as custodian three at Hamlin PKA.
Now, with the adult basic, and now we have posted a, how many day job?
Two twenty and closed today.
Three twenty, we're, that's, this is trial number three, right?
It's trial number three, well. And then on the sheet I gave you, you can see that a lot of these jobs have been filled, but we're holding some for next year, we got a sub going because we have to hold them. And, uh, as retirements come in, I'll start bringing that list in also. At the current time, we've had, uh, I know, uh, two cooks, and a secretary retired at West Hamlin, and we only had one teacher turn into retirement, and that was a special ed teacher at West Hamlin at this time. But we've been told that there was probably seven, eight, nine out there who told us they were going to do it.
When is the date that they do it?
March first. They let us know about March first.
How much is the amount they get?
Five hundred and-
All right, any other questions, any of these? Is that an all yes on the personnel?
Yes.
Comments, concerns, board members, what they? Number one. Post, or, yeah? He's going full cheese now.
We did receive our, uh, grant award from the school building authority for our Riffing projects, which is exciting. Uh, Mr. Friesly and I have signed the grant application, and, uh, we'll, we'll get those back in the mail. Uh, it's my understanding, looking at the timeline in this document, that we had until May thirty-first to bid out the Riffing projects. What they will look like, we're still working on that. Uh, I know Mr. Ellis and Mr. Ghazi both have already been, uh, consultation with the, uh, school building authority to kind of guide us through this process. The project completion date was what, was it August of nineteen? I think this is when, when those projects had to be completed, so, um, hopefully, this will go very smoothly over the next few weeks, and we'll, we'll get this project bid and, uh, and get the work started. The sewer treatment plants at Duval, talked to Mr. Ghazi today, those are to be bid this month. So, that, that'll be happening soon. Anticipating that that work, uh, can take place at any time, uh, once the bid's been approved by the board. Those, those sewer treatment plants will just go alongside the existing sewer treatment plants, as Mr. Ghazi explained, uh, to the board previously. Once they're ready to switch over, that, that'll happen very quickly, and we shouldn't be in a situation where we're without, or being concerned about having a sewer treatment plant at any point in time. And the other news I have for you is the portable classroom at Midway. And that's, that's coming together now. Uh, the, uh, U S Army Corps of Engineers been on site, conducted a survey. The classroom's not in the floodpoint, so we're waiting now to commit to go ahead and, uh, where we can bid that, I think, Mr. Ellis, was it, Mr. Ghazi talking to you about that today, the process for bidding that classroom?
We did talk about it, so, just a little bit.
But it's, I mean, it's going to be soon, we anticipate. And, uh, in talking to Mr. Ghazi, we should have the new classroom in place and ready to go, maybe by the end of this school year, certainly by the time the students come back next fall.
It's just constructed on site, to be constructed on site.
It'd be, uh, this is a portable court, yeah. I'll put that, just pull it in there.
Have a question about that to everybody.
But I'll have, I'll invite Greg, I'll have him come to an upcoming board meeting, and I'll think you, you can explain this much better than I can. And, uh, and we should, you know, a couple or three weeks from now, have a much better picture on the bidding process for the sewer treatment plants and the, uh, roof projects. So, it's exciting, can't wait to see that work, get that going.
There's your good thing.
And that's, that's all I have for you to say.
Okay. No one else has anything else then? Let's adjourn until February the fifteenth, December eighteen, eight-thirty a.m., with the work session. And a regular session would be our next meeting, would be February the twentieth at six p.m. here at County Office. But not, uh, we're going to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Webberson and Mr. Smith. Yes?
Yes.